We call to order the meeting of the Williamsport City Council. It's Thursday, March 14th, roughly 7:30 PM in City Hall, Council Chambers. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Joel Henderson and remain standing for the flag salute.
Lord, it's our privilege to come to you now and ask for divine wisdom and for your compassionate perspective, and we thank you for this great city that you have placed us in. We thank you for the great privilege that it is to live here, to work here. We thank you for all the valuable resources that you've entrusted to us, and we pray that you would help us to manage them well. We thank you for the great generosity that our city and region has showed in this last couple of days during this Raise the Region event. We thank you for the great compassion that has been displayed all across this area. And, Lord, we thank you for your protection over our city and for your protection over those that serve our city in so many ways. And we do ask for that continued protection for those who are in harm's way, both here and abroad. Lord, we ask for your spirit of truth, to cut through falsehood as we discuss city business, as we make decisions. We pray that there would be clarity and understanding. Lord, forgive our pride, forgive our selfishness, humble us before the great responsibility and duties that we have here tonight. And we pray that you would guide us with your mighty hand. And we ask this in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. We'll move to approval of City Council minutes dated February 28th, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Questions, corrections, and counsel? If not, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and motion passes. Item four, limited courtesy of the floor, Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street.
Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street. Just quickly, before I go on to the subject of the council compensation, I want to thank you, Randy, for pointing out that the city council meetings are loaded onto YouTube. They don't come up on Google. I didn't search through all 15 million results, but they are not on Google easily. City council compensation. I sure wish city council would have at some point in time go through and do what the government cost of living allowance increases for every year would have been and show what council members would be making had y'all received just the state, federal COLAs that all other government employees had gotten. Also, the health insurance. One of the things I find is, you know, everybody in the private industry and public think, why do they part-time, you know, get health insurance? Y'all need to explain and educate people about, well, we can't just say no or else it, you know, there's contract stuff, you know? It doesn't work like public or a company thinks it does. I really wish y'all would do a little bit more to educate the public en masse, you know? At the end of council meetings, y'all get time to talk. Also, individually, I'd like y'all to, when you get your time to talk at the end of the meeting, explain to people how many hours a week you do. So many people, I see, well, they just go to a meeting or two. It's like, what, an hour, two hours a month, you know? They don't realize how many hours, you know? One of y'all tries to go shopping. How many times have you gone shopping and not been stopped in the store or the parking lot, wherever, and had people talk to you and ask you about stuff, you know? And so I guess for the compensation, I'd like y'all to educate the public and let people know so that there's not hurt feelings about, you know, everybody thinking y'all have it so easy and making all this money and all these great benefits and why don't they just do this, that, and other? And the last thing I'd say, Ms. Frank, I don't know if she's considered council. I know she works for the council. Y'all need to get this woman some help. She does a wonderful job, but she's at her limit, and I've suggested, you know, before that maybe an intern or something like that or an employee for 20 hours a week or something just so she could not just be treading water, but a little bit ahead and do those things that it would be nice to get done. Have a great evening and happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone.
Same to you, Mr. Miller. Thank you. We have a rather lengthy agenda tonight with quite a few items on it, and I'm going to move a couple around, but bear with me, and I know my peers on council will help me through this as well. First, we're going to move item 22 to next on the docket. Resolution to approve and adopt the Park Avenue Plan. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution to approve and adopt the Park Avenue Plan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I mean, a motion.
And a second.
And a second.
There you go.
We got it. Thank you. Mrs. Young?
Good evening. Council will recall that in December, Matt Ingalls from Ingalls Planning &amp; Design gave a PowerPoint presentation of a draft of the Park Avenue Plan. After that, in January, we held a community meeting on the draft plan, and based on input from that meeting, Matt made some minor revisions to the plan, and it's now before City Council for adoption. Just some general reminders. The plan was prepared with funding from Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, UPMC, Susquehanna, City of Williamsport, River Valley Transit, and the total project cost was $89,280. The plan areas bounded by Little League Boulevard to the south, Park Court to the north, Market Street to the east, and Campbell Street to the west. Steering Committee was created to guide planning efforts for the area. The committee represented diverse interests and institutions from the community. The steering committee met several times throughout the planning process and also supported and participated in public and stakeholder outreach. Two open house community meetings were conducted to gather public input. Based on the economic conditions of the area, the plan focuses on the need for stabilization as opposed to revitalization. The plan's components include planning and economic context, challenges to success, principles, priorities, and an action plan. I would like to thank Ingalls Planning &amp; Design, CZB, and Larson Design Group for all of the work that went into preparing the plan. Their research was thorough, and they truly became familiar with every aspect of this neighborhood. The plan recognizes and identifies the challenges facing the Park Avenue area, but it also offers viable solutions to those challenges with action plan initiatives that are realistic and attainable. It was a pleasure to work with Matt and his team. This plan was reviewed by the Finance Committee and also by the Public Works Committee, and Matt Ingalls is here this evening to answer any questions that you have about the plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. It was reviewed by Finance and Public Works. Ms. Mealy?
Yes, this was obviously forwarded to the full body of council with a recommendation to adopt. The report is very thorough and seems strikingly realistic, I think, given the perhaps somewhat lofty goals that we entered into this whole concept with, and we really appreciate that. The pragmatism, I suppose, that will hopefully, in fact, I'm just looking over the Principles page, that will hopefully help us make good, solid efforts in the neighborhood and not expect immediate results, but, you know, look for long-term gains. And the suggestions for a path moving forward, the suggestions as well to focus on not just that neighborhood, but improving other neighborhoods in the city for a bit of a spillover affecting to that neighborhood, all of those, I think, are solid and will serve us well. So, as I said, Finance had a brief discussion about it and forwarded it to the full body of council with positive recommendation. The one question that I asked of Ms. Young, of which she wasn't, for which she wasn't totally certain of the answer, was, I wasn't able to attend the final session in January, February, and I wasn't certain what suggestions had come out of that meeting and what changes you had made to the document to reflect the public meeting. So you can address that now, or you can wait until we have other questions elsewhere in the discussion, but...
I can go ahead and address now.
Sure, if you want. If you come to the microphone, that makes things easier for our overworked city clerk down there.
We had a good turnout at the public meeting in January. What had happened, I think, a lot of, a lot of the comments that we received, which was great because a lot of them were already addressed in the plan. A couple that we revised and added some additional information on was public space. That was something, I think, that came up, and people wanted to make sure that as things progressed that there was, there was an opportunity to include public space, and so we bolstered that a little bit in the mixed use section, which I think was a great addition. We also made a couple of minor additions to a couple of sections that talked about sustainability. That was something that a few people brought up, and as we move forward, you know, taking advantage of sustainable building practices and energy efficiency and those types of things, which I think are all excellent ideas, so we included those as well.
And what was the, if you can just give me a rundown on, I heard you had about, a crowd of about 40 on kind of a crappy night in January.
Yeah.
And what was the, what was the mix of individuals? Were there actually folks there from the neighborhood or who? And maybe since you don't know people from the neighborhood, that my fellow councilpeople can tell me. Who was there, Randy?
Well, I forgot the list, but that man there.
Yeah, and one thing I was telling Randy, one of the things we'll do is we'll package up everything, and so that way you guys have all of the sign-in sheets and things like that in case you want to contact individuals to get involved as you move forward. I think there was a pretty healthy mix. I was a bit surprised. There were a number of people from outside the neighborhood that were just really interested in the plan, and, you know, they, they come to the neighborhood on a fairly regular basis in terms of the Y and UPMC, and they were just interested in, you know, the future of the neighborhood, which I thought was fantastic. So I think we had a fewer local residents than we did at our first meeting, but that could have, you know, the weather certainly could have had something to do with that.
Yeah. Well, that's, it's good to hear that people are curious in Williamsport about what's happening in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
I think it is, it's a tough neighborhood in terms of, in terms of its residents. There are, I think, relatively few residents, given the amount of landmass there is there, and also a high rental population, which is going to limit perhaps the investment people take in the neighborhood. But, but it's good to hear that you did have some residential input as well at certain stages, so.
Yeah, and with the high rental rates, it's a fairly transient neighborhood as well.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, as I recall, well, from being a tenant, it can be hard to invest yourself, especially in the specific neighborhood you live in, knowing that even if you stay in the city, the neighborhood might change, you know?
Sure.
You might change neighborhoods. Anyway, thank you. That was everything I had.
Absolutely.
If I might add to that, there were some people from the far eastern end of that segment out towards Market Street.
Got it, okay. Out towards like Hebert Street and Market.
Who had some real interests and interesting ideas about how they wanted to get involved in things that could be done there.
That's fantastic. We should definitely try to wrap them into a coalition then, you know?
Yeah.
I think our stakeholder group, our advisory committee, was primarily sort of driven by institutions in the neighborhood so far, so if we could include citizens, it would be great to see that happen moving forward. So great.
Great. I'm going to go to Mrs. Katz, who's Public Works, and is also on Finance. I just wanted to address one financial thing first. The total cost was $89,000, but it's broken down in this manner. The DCED, the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, put $29,000 into it and some change. UPMC put $25,000 into it. The city put $25,000 in, and RVT put $10,000 in. So the, that's the breakdown. The city's share was 25 and RVT 10, so you put that together, but that brings you to the 89,000 total. Mrs. Katz, Public Works?
Yes, this did come to Public Works, and again, this was passed on to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Matt, one of the things that we discussed was, we were really pleased that you not only took into Park Avenue, but you went through the whole city and took in what the rest of the city also looked like, from what I understand from Stephanie, that you looked at the gateway and places like that, which is really important because even though we're looking at Park Avenue, it also encompasses the whole city. We also appreciated that you didn't sugarcoat this, and we also were pleased that we understand that this is going to take anywheres from one year to 15 years to bring it to maybe fruition, and with a lot of work and a lot of people putting effort into this, it just explains so many different things. You outlined everything so beautifully for us. There was very few questions from this because you did, you outlined it for us and answered so many questions for us, but we want to thank you very much, but you took the whole city into the picture.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Yeah, and the thing is, with a neighborhood, with a neighborhood plan, the context is also very important. Now, we certainly would have liked to be able to go in a little bit further in depth more with, with some of the other neighborhoods, but that's one of the things that we realized early on when we looked at, you know, the challenges to success that we outlined in the plan, that that's, you know, certainly one of them, is that, you know, what you do in one neighborhood can impact, you know, another neighborhood, and having a clear understanding of what the objective and how the other neighborhoods fit in, I think, is going to be important as you, as you move forward and maybe even do other neighborhood plans. So that's one of the reasons why we identified that in there, because that's something, just talking with stakeholders in our investigation and our research, that we, we found that there wasn't a, with the exception of the Gateway neighborhood and the plan that was done for that, and we also, we talked to some representatives on that committee that were involved with as part of that process. But, you know, we try to do the best we can with, with the resources that we have to really kind of understand how a neighborhood or a study area fits within the context of a larger area. So thank you for pointing that out.
We do thank you.
Mr. Noviello?
We were at the meeting at Public Works as well and got some really good information. Certainly, the booklet is very well done, very well put together, good professional services. I'm happy to have all that. I'm happy to see that the organization and those who were involved initially here had the foresight to kind of step back and take a look at the bigger picture. The night we spoke about when they had the last gathering was a very, very tough night weather-wise, but I was surprised at the amount of people there. And there were a number of people from that community neighborhood. That's kind of my old stomping grounds, so I knew quite a few of the people that showed up. And, but I did have a couple of people ask me whether or not, is this going to stop at my front door, which relates back to what you just mentioned about the idea of looking at the adjacent neighborhoods and, I don't know that we, any, I don't know that we would want to see an abrupt ending to this necessarily. We want to see as, as much carryover as we possibly can. But the idea of stepping back and looking at that larger picture and recognizing the need for a bit of a stabilization as opposed to revitalizing right away, you know, if we put that in layman's terms, it's like putting a brand-new house on an old beaten-up foundation. There was not going to be much advantage in doing that. So looking to building it from the ground up, I think, is a really good, insightful way of looking at this, and I'm glad the people that are involved are the ones that are involved. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson?
I would echo everything that's been said so far, and just to point out, early in the action plan, you've got, I really appreciate, you know, the steps you've got laid out here in the action plans, one, two, three, four, five, and then you lay out who should, who should implement these action steps or a recommendation and what resources it will take. I mean, it's just very thorough for us, and I would note that number three on the list is strategic code enforcement, compliance assistance, and owner engagement. I mean, these are things, it's not, it's not new. We know about these things, and these are, these are things that is well within our ability to do, and it's, it's almost like we just need this nudge to say, you know what? The codes matters. The police matters. Paving our streets matters. All these things matter in big ways, and sometimes with all the bigger ideas that we have, these things get pushed to the side as though they are not quite as important. But according to the plan that you've laid out, they occur very early in this process, and I appreciate that because I think when we focus on those, those basic necessities of our city, we'll focus on it here, but certainly that ought to spread, you know? And if we just kind of return back to the basics, so to speak, we're going to see the economic stimulation that we desire, and I appreciate you pointing that out for us because sometimes we, we miss the forest for the trees, and so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions? Just in closing, I'd like to, thank you, Matt. Having been involved in this process from the beginning, I was the council rep, so I was in on the RFP and the decisions, and we had able leadership there, and Stephanie Young was a big part of that, and we made the right choice. It was a hard choice because there were good firms, but we were, you and I were just having a conversation here before the meeting, and you mentioned your impression of the city as a whole, and if you'd care to share that, I'd like everyone to hear that.
Absolutely. You know, over the past, you know, close to a year now, 10, 11 months, and I've traveled the Route 15 corridor way too much over the last several years, just traveling south and between work and my sun-playing travel across, it's, but, you know, I always didn't know much about Williamsport, and when I had the opportunity to work here, the more time I spent here, the more I realized how amazing your, your city is. It truly is. I spend a lot of time in small cities and boroughs and villages, and you just have a really vibrant city, especially the downtown. I mean, every time I've, I've come here, I stayed downtown, and I feel very comfortable walking. You have great restaurants and public spaces in your streets, and I know at times when you're in the trenches, you don't, you don't see all that, but as someone from the outside that's had an opportunity to spend a fairly amount of significant time here, it really is impressive. And, you know, I look forward to stopping here on my way south, and, in fact, I was, I was just, I'm working on a project in a community a little bit south from here, and the other night I chose to stay here because I just, I just wanted to spend more time here and see downtown and feel very comfortable walking around. Last night, and people out and about, the hotels were full. It was, it was, it was a great experience.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate, appreciate your kind words. I think that's a good note to end on, so Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Safe travels. Thank you, Stephanie.
At this point, I'm going to move items 20 and 21 to the top. The excavation of streets for gas mains by UGI. So we'll take item 21st. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution authorizing the excavation of certain streets for a gas main replacement project by the City of Williamsport for UGI utilities.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Motion and a second. Mr. Girardi?
Yes, good evening, Vice President Allison and members of council. What you have before you are two actual resolutions concerning two streets in the City of Williamsport. They're basically identical resolutions. We'll start with the first one, which would be Isabella Street gas main. If you look at your third, whereas down, you'll see there's one that has Isabella. Along with that, I have attached a map showing the areas that they're going to be working in. Discussed with the gas company also, too, that I just wanted to point out that are the same on both these, is that whereas the City Council of the City of Williamsport, Pennsylvania shall require all cuts to have four inches of high-performance coal patch to the top of the road instead of coal patch for the winter season. And then the other one, the second one we added to this one was, whereas the City, City Council of the City of Williamsport, Pennsylvania under Article 901 requires base repair, milling and overlay prior to the asphalt plant closing during the calendar year of 2019. Now, there would possibly come a situation where if we go out and our engineering department at Adams walk out and they decide that the other side of the road should be milled and overlaid at the same time, we'll probably come back through, they'll probably piggyback with the city and do a joint project, and they'll come probably back through and request that to be extended till spring of next year. We won't know that till we get a little bit further along in the project, depending on the cuts and how bad the road is on the other side. So at this point, we're looking to see it being done by the closing of the plants in 2019 unless something else were to come up at this point. And that, and this did go through Public Works.
Mrs. Katz, Public Works?
Yes, this did go through Public Works. This is where we set up an ordinance a couple of years ago as far as the utilities coming to us to really get permission to do the cuts in the streets and that we approve the cuts, and this one is going a little earlier than usual. Usually, we don't start until after April 1st, and because they want to start work, there's so much work that's going to be going on in, in the city that we do have the utilities coming to us asking for more permission with a lot of different areas in the city, only because we want to get a jump start on this because there's going to be a lot of inconveniences throughout the city in the next couple of years. And with this, we looked at this, and it's more or less housekeeping when you start, look at this.
Correct.
And there's, we approved it, went to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Mrs. Katz, questions or comments from council members? Okay, awesome. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes. Let's do item 21 in short form, please.
Resolution authorizing the excavation of certain streets for a gas main replacement project by the City of Williamsport for UGI utilities.
Yes, the only thing I want to add is this one is for Memorial Street Avenue, and I did attach a drawing showing where they're working and so forth. The same stipulations and concerns are on this one as it was on the other one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Girardi. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion and a second, and anything to add, Mrs. Katz?
Nope, ditto, same thing.
I assume there's no other questions from council members. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Girardi? We might as well, we'll go back to the top, do item five, ordinance, and these are all final readings of ordinances we already passed on first reading. Mr. White's up. Mrs. Frank?
An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Williamsport, Pennsylvania.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. We've already been, been through these all one time. Would you care to address anything?
Good evening, Vice President Allison and members of council. The first ordinance we have here is for the editing and inclusion of the, of the ordinances as part of the codified ordinances of the city. This is what I'll call a mere housekeeping event, and as council knows, because it was already passed in the first reading, and I'll pass it back to the Vice President.
Thank you. Mr. White? Mr. White. Any other questions tonight from council? I think we're ready to go on, oh.
As Mr. Nichols would say, this standard resolution. Anyway, that's all. No questions. I'm just being a jerk.
In that case, on the motion, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item six, then. An ordinance amending Article 111 in short form. Mrs. Frank, please.
An ordinance amending Article 111 of the codified ordinances of the City of Williamsport setting the compensation of city council.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Item six is on the floor. Mr. White, we've discussed this already. I don't know if you have anything to add.
Nothing to add.
Counsel, anything to add or address? Mr. Henderson.
Yeah, we had a good discussion, I think, in our last council meeting. I don't necessarily want to rehash everything, but I want to thank Mr. Scott Miller for coming and, and saying some things about that. I think it's an important discussion for all of us to have. But I, I just wanted to say that I think, I think we can start this, this dialogue, and, and, and there'll be a good way for us to do that. And I think Mr. Allison had some ideas about starting that dialogue and, and, and walking down this road together. I did want to say, though, I was a little disappointed with the newspaper coverage. I just have to say this. It almost sounded like I was quoted as, "The reason I'm leaving council is because I'm not getting paid enough." And, and I have to correct the record. I mean, that is just ridiculous and preposterous, and I was very disappointed at that. The point I was making was that I am free, perhaps more so than other council members, to discuss this issue because I am not returning to council. And that's all that I was saying. And, and again, I agree with the direction of this. My personal feeling is that we can go deeper in the future, and perhaps we will. But I just want to kind of set the record straight for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Ms. Mealy.
And if memory serves me, Mr. Cooley, you weren't with us last meeting, correct? So I was actually thinking, not that I want to rehash the entirety of the discussion that we had last time around these several items, but I did want to point out for the sake of the, the few members of the public who might be watching this evening or who might choose to watch us later on YouTube, that, that the four ordinances that we're about to vote on next all address the compensation of various elected positions within the city. And the major change, aside from a few cost of living increases to every position aside from city council, is that we are, all of the, all of the elected officials now will, will pay a certain percentage into, into healthcare. Five percent of individual coverage and 10% of family or spouse, spousal coverage. And, and the reason I think that, that that's an important thing to note is that we are, we are asking, of course, of, of the city's unions as well to, to pay into their healthcare because healthcare, as, as everyone knows nationwide, is becoming an exceptionally expensive proposition. And, and so this is, I, I think, an attempt by city council and, and other elected officials to, to lead the, the charge, if you will, or to take our responsibility as elected officials seriously and, and require of ourselves the same things that we're requesting of, of our employees within the city. So that, of course, the last meeting led to a bunch of discussion about healthcare and city council salary and all sorts of things. But that's, that's the important part to me is that the, the germane element of all of these ordinances is, is the addition of a healthcare requirement for everyone. And that's it. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
That's a good, good summation.
Okay.
Any other comments? Mr. Slaughter.
Because it wasn't on the record last time, or on TV last time, that Streets and Parks, we did know also that Streets and Parks has taken the lead as far as healthcare with their union, their union contract a year ago.
Yes.
So they've already started to pay in for their healthcare. So just wanted to make sure that was, that we did have that as well.
Yes, absolutely. And that's important. People have to understand, and I think they do, that when you're dealing with a union, you can't make unilateral changes. It's negotiations. As far as council's compensation, I don't want to say much about that other than, I mean, I've, I've heard all kinds of opinions out there. Some people think we shouldn't be paid anything because, you know, that's just their point of view. Some think more. The vast majority of people fit somewhere in between, and I think what we want to do is take a, a studied measure approach to this and see. We, we could make a change tonight, but is it the right change? Are we changing the right things? And what's fair and equitable in Williamsport? We, we need to come to it. It needs to be a thoughtful, right decision because it's, it sets it for the future. And it is true that council, the, the rate the council was paid was set when we changed to third-class optional city with a strong mayor, and that was 72. There's been one raised since then. So it went from $2,500 up to what it is now, I believe. So there hasn't been a, a lot of increase in that. And the other point was, yes, council has healthcare. When it was granted council, healthcare didn't count, cost anything because it didn't cost anybody anything back then, practically speaking. But we realize it's a changing landscape there, and we want to be leaders in that and do the right thing. So I'll just leave it at that because we said those things last time. Mr. Henderson.
And just to point out, like, as you were saying, we could change things. Well, we, in fact, we are tonight.
Yeah.
It's, the, the compensation package, if you will, is not, will not be the same as what it has been going forward in that council will be required to pay into their health insurance, that five and 10% for families. So, so that is a, I think, a, a good change in the right direction and will lead to, as you were saying, more discussion.
Right.
As to what will be the best change someday.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that discussion, since it's been open, it, it's not going to languish. I can assure you that. In any case, any other comments from council? Then, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. And the motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Then we'll go to item eight. An ordinance amending Article 131 of the, am I right here? No.
Seven.
Item seven. An ordinance amending Article 129 of the codified ordinances of the city in short form, please.
An ordinance amending Article 129 of the codified ordinances of the City of Williamsport setting the compensation of the city treasurer and tax collector.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. White, we're good with that.
Nothing to add, just to reiterate that this is the second of four, and this one is for the treasurer and the tax collector, and the last one was for city council.
Thank you. Comments from council tonight? Mr. Henderson.
Just, just one more. We didn't mention this as we were discussing it just a moment ago. The reason we're not delaying this ordinance to have a study, or these ordinances to have a study and then make the decision again later is because these changes need to be made before names can be withdrawn from the ballot in this current election cycle. So there is that time issue, and that's why it's here before us tonight, and that's why it needs to be completed tonight. And so we can address it later.
Yes.
But this needs to be done tonight, and I think that's important to point out as well.
Good point. That's an excellent point. Any other comments from council? Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item eight, then, is an ordinance amending Article 131 in short form, please, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance amending Article 131 of the codified ordinances of the City of Williamsport setting the compensation of the city controller.
Is there a motion?
No move. Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. White, I'm sure it's the same.
This is the third of four, and as Ms. Frank said, this is for the city controller.
Comments from council? Seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. And the motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank on that one. An ordinance amending Article 123, finally.
An ordinance amending Article 123 of the codified ordinances of the City of Williamsport setting the compensation of the mayor.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Four of four.
Four of four for the mayor.
Is there comments from council? Seeing none, Mrs. Frank on this motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. And motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to do a series of ordinance amendments for first reading. Find mine here. We're doing, these are a series of CDBG funds from the year 2012 through 2017. Some of them are being closed out and some money's being moved around, so we'll work our way through them one at a time with the...
I can address these all at once, or if you'd like, I can take them individually, however you would.
We probably should do them individually because
Okay.
Money's, money's changing hands, but, well, we, we should open up. I would, in Finance Committee, we went through these, and there's money moving, and so...
They sort of build on one another, so...
Yes.
I think maybe we should, why don't we open up with an overview? That might be.
Pardon me?
Maybe, maybe we could have an overview and then discussion on each individual.
Okay. Starting with the first three ordinances, they close out community development block grant funds for program years 2012, 13, and 14. The remaining balances in those years, $289,630.69, will be transferred into the contingency line item in CDBG program year 2015, which will be the oldest year that will remain open. We're proposing to transfer $120,000 of that contingency to 2016 Brandon Park Rehabilitation Project. The CDBG program year for 2016 will remain open, and the transferred $120,000 for Brandon Park will be reflected in the public facilities line item. The rest of that ordinance in 2016 amends the budget by closing out certain line items and then balancing the budget. The CDBG program year for 2017 will also remain open, and this ordinance, ordinance just amends the budget by closing out certain line items and balancing the budget. If we go back to the Brandon Park project where we're transferring the $120,000, the original budget was $500,000. That includes $125,000 from 2016 CDBG funds, $125,000 from 2017 CDBG funds, and $250,000 of DCNR funds. After consultant costs, there's $438,022 available for construction. We held a bid opening on February 4th for the general site work and electrical work, and the lowest bid was $599,69. So we're working to reduce the scope of work so that we have a total construction budget of $558,022. So far, we've eliminated items that include a sidewalk by the poolhouse and the planting of a number of trees and shrubs. Once the transfer ordinance passes on final reading, then we would be able to award the bid at city council, and we would plan to do that on March 28th. All of these ordinances were reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Well, we can ask more questions as we go through now, but that gives everybody a, a good general idea. So let's start with item 10.
Excuse me, Randy, you need a motion and a second?
What?
You need a motion?
That's what I was, I was going to
Okay.
Have you read item 10 in short, in short form, please.
Amending closing of the 38th year 2012 Community Development Block Grant Fund.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We want to discuss, we can discuss everything we just talked about, or would you rather go through, the first three are closings and the money's being moved, so maybe when we get down a little bit. Mr. Henderson.
I, I wonder if you could just explain for, for everyone the reason we have to do it this way because it is the, the block grant funding. I wonder if you could just kind of, just to explain the reasoning why, I mean, it looks like, boy, we're moving all this, you know, all this around, but there's a reason for that.
Well, this is basically internal housekeeping. We work with the Finance Department with these account and org numbers, so it's basically a record-keeping system. HUD has a totally different system, and we try to make them compatible. They're very different, but this is really just some internal housekeeping so that we can keep track of our budget and make sure that we don't overspend from year to year.
And that each, each grant is its own budget.
Right. Every year, we get an allocation.
Exactly.
So, yes, so...
So that because of that, they remain open until we use all those funds, and if we don't use them, then we have to move them to another budget of sorts.
Right.
So that we can use them because the project has been completed. Is that correct?
Right. Well, yes, once there's a contingency balance, in order to close out the year, the money has to be moved somewhere. And we always move it to the oldest year, and we keep it there until that year needs to be closed out, or we need to transfer it for another project. You can never move money backwards. You always have to move it forward.
Right. Right. Thank you. Ms. Mealy.
But just so that we're clear, what that means is that, at least my understanding is that, that all the projects executed in 2012 have been finished, any remaining, whether it was program income, we, we do have certain programs that will receive income at some point after the, the activity is completed, loans, loans to homeowners, things like that. Any, any remaining income or, or funds from projects that were slightly under budget, which may occasionally happen here in the city, eventually gets transferred into the contingency fund, and there it sits until we close the year out. And then when we close the year out, that gets moved into another year. We, we could address this later on, but I'll say it now while I'm thinking about it. The reason why we're moving all of it into 2016, which seemed to me like a slightly obscure decision, instead of moving it in 2019, which is the year that it is, is because of the many things that happen with community development block grant funding, we often choose to fund projects that aren't necessarily completed within the year that we make the decision to fund them. In this case, we chose to fund the Brandon Park Project with $125,000 of monies from the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Year, and $125,000 of monies from the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Year initially, when we needed another $120,000 to complete the project, because a number of years have elapsed since the initial design phase, and the project now costs more than was projected. We transfer that into the 2016 year, the original, the year of original funding, for, I'm assuming it's both a requirement of HUD and also a record-keeping element for us.
Right, again, you always want to move it to the oldest year that's open, and that that project originated in 2016, so that's, that's the logical place to put it.
Right. So that's, that's why there's all this jockeying around the funds, and we're not just putting all of them in 2019, where it would seem like, well, hey, that's where we are. So, yeah, there will be a quiz on all of this later. Anyway.
I cannot stick around for that tonight, but.
Mrs. Katz?
This just proves the difference between private business and the government, and how slowly it moves.
It's a different record-keeping city, but it's a system, but in the long run, we're glad to have that million and change a year.
Yes.
So.
And I might add, we're thankful for a community development department that is able to accurately keep track of all these, and keep us in good standing with the federal government, so.
Yeah, we're a little bit behind with these ordinances, but the hope is to come back around this time every year and, and clean some things up, so.
And one other thing about the, the years, there's a limit on how, when you have to have the oldest one?
Well, with HUD, you can't keep any projects open more than five years. So, in the HUD system, the 2012, 13, and 14 have already been closed.
Right.
So we're just trying to play catch-up here internally with our Finance Department.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Henderson?
Just one more thought, and that is that, while it is definitely cumbersome, it, the reason for that is because this money is, has been awarded for a specific purpose, and it is important that the, the representatives of the people maintain that, and they watch that, and that we're not just using whatever funds we want for whatever reason. And so, while it's cumbersome, it's important, and so we're, we're thankful to do this, and make sure that these funds are used for what they were appropriated. And so, while it's cumbersome, it, it's for that accountability and transparency, and so it's important.
Thank you. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Frank, Mrs. Frank. Item 11, an ordinance amending and closing the 39th year 2013, in short form, please.
Amending closing of 39th year 2013 Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Okay, none on this one. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item 12, an ordinance amending closing of the 40th year 2014. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Amending closing of the 40th year 2014 Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? From council. Hearing done. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you on that. Mrs. Frank, item 13, an ordinance amending and transferring the 41st year 2015. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance amend and transfer 41st year 2015 Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion on this year? Mr. Henderson?
Just that this is, we're not closing out this year.
Right, that's correct.
We're just moving this to, from what year, from the 41st, well, just, would you just review that for me? What we're doing exactly here, we're, we're moving it?
Yeah, the contingency balance from the prior three years is reflected in this ordinance.
Yes.
So you see that $289,630.69 moved from 12, 13, and 14 into 15, which will stay open, and then from that contingency balance, we're taking $120,000 and moving it into the 2016 Brandon Park Rehabilitation Project.
All right. Thank you for just putting that out one more time for us.
It's, yeah, it's
It's a lot.
What, yeah, and all the math there on that front page, so we can track it pretty easily. Any other questions or observations? If not, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, for that one. Item 14, an ordinance amending 42nd year 2016. Mrs. Frank, in short form.
An ordinance amend 42nd year 2016 Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Uh, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Other comments or questions on this one? If not, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, on that, and finally, item 15, an ordinance amending the 43rd year 2017. Mrs. Frank, please.
An ordinance amend 43rd year 2017 Community Development Block Grant Funds.
And, motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, thank you. Any more discussion? Ms. Mealy?
And just to be clear, for our purposes, Ms. Young, this is just housekeeping, right? Reflecting, reflecting
Yes, yes, we're not moving anything.
Not moving any money, this is just reflecting changes that, discrepancies between the way that we originally first saw spending it and the way that it has been spent. Okay, so far.
Yeah, right.
Okay, got it.
Good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Appreciate you guiding us through that. Mr. White?
It came to my attention that at the last meeting, because it wasn't televised, it would probably be good for us, for purposes of the audience at home and for a clear record, for us to read the numbers for the salaries that, that were passed tonight, just so everybody is aware of the numbers, and I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. I'd be happy to have you do it, we all would.
So, and, and I'll do it in abbreviated form.
Okay, and that's even better.
And I'll start with the City Council, and I'll go right down through the four. For City Council, from 2020 to 2023, the President of City Council, $3,500; Vice President of City Council, $3,250; and other members of Council, $3,000, and then the 5% and 10% premium contributions. For the Treasurer, 2020, $20,956; 2021, $21,375.12; 2022, $21,375.12; 2023, $21,802.62; for Tax Collector, in 2020, $20,956; 2021, $21,375.12; 2022, $21,375.12; 2023, $21,802.62. For the City Controller, and for that, also the 5% and 10% premium contributions. For the City Controller, 2020, that's $41,914; for 2021, $42,752.28; 2022, $42,752.28; 2023, $43,607.32, with the 5% and 10% premium contributions. And then finally, for the Mayor, 2020 is $72,995; 2021, $74,454.90; 2022, $74,455.90; 2023, $75,943.99, with the 5% and 10% premium contributions. And that's all, thank you.
Yes, wonderful. Thank you, Mr. White, and thank you, Mrs. Frank. We definitely want those numbers to be public, and I don't think they made the newspaper, did they? Yeah, but in any case, it's better that they, in this day and age, get out over the airwaves as well. Okay, so we finished up the second readings and the first readings, which we're all gonna have to do again in two weeks. So that brings us to item 16, an ordinance amending Part 15 Fire Prevention Code. Mrs. Frank, in short order, please.
An ordinance amending Part 15 Fire Prevention Code, Article 1521, Fee Schedule, be it ordained by the City Council or the City of Williamsport as follows.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Chief Heckman?
Mr. Allison, members of council, tonight I bring for you a ordinance and some amendment to the current existing Fire Prevention Code. It focuses around sections, basically 15. You received in your packets earlier this week, you should have a little color guide there, right? Those were the changes that we made, and then we gave you the whole packet with it, with the changes made. This already went through Public Safety with a positive recommendation and were forwarded with us. The ordinance amended has changed.
Okay, thank you, Chief Heckman. Mr. Henderson, Public Safety.
Yes, this did come to Public Safety. We've been working on this for a little while. Our, our current ordinance as it stands gives us the authority to bill liable parties for costs incurred during a rescue operation or other things like that, vehicle accidents and the like. Our current ordinance as it stands places the responsibility of that billing process on the Director of Finance. That's a lot for our Finance Department, and consequently, we've not been very effective in, in doing what we are authorized to do already. So, the idea was brought that we could hire a third-party billing service to do this, and in order to hire a third party, we would have to amend our current, or our current ordinance here, and, and part of the amendment is just inserting that those who would bill the liable party would be either the Director of Finance and Personnel, or the authorized third-party billing agent. That's what we're adding in, the authorized third-party billing agent. This will allow us to hire someone to be able to do this for us, and, and in so doing, we should see a lot of revenue coming in that will be a great help to us. So then, in addition to just changing those few words and adding the authorized third-party billing agent, we've also had to outline the exact process that we would go through. And so, that's outlined in this as well, and, and then we had to amend the fee schedule that would go along with that. That way, when we do hire a third-party billing agent, they can look at what our fee schedule is and charge that liable party in accordance with our fee schedule, which we've looked at here, and, and these fees are very similar to many other cities around Pennsylvania as well. And in fact, this is the route that, that many Pennsylvania cities are going, most around this area, I believe, and so I think it's, it's important that we kind of follow suit in this way. I would also mention that our, our budget that we passed in December of this last year included a revenue line item that is dependent on this right here. And so, because we, we had great faith that, that this would not be a problem for us, and that it would be a great benefit for the city to do. And so, again, this simply allows us to do what we've always been allowed to do more efficiently now, and using a third-party billing agents, agency to do that. Does that cover everything, pretty much?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking, the culmination of almost three years of work here.
Yeah.
And with the, the insurance, the way the insurance industry reads, with our, with the codes that need to be put in, I don't know how we would ever accomplish this in-house. I know there was an attempt at this originally on the original ordinance. Somehow, the beliefs at the time, they thought we could do it in-house, and I was all for that. There's, there's no reason to try and gain that. We approached, we call them PAFERS, Pennsylvania Recovery and Fire Rescue Services, located in southeast PA. All my Class III cities in the state are using them. Probably 90% of the volunteer fire departments like Kement County are using them to great success. Just, they've got a good, a good, a good run. Mr. Metter's been up here before with us, he's answered all of our questions, went down through everything to find that line, and I, I think that we have nothing to gain for. Right now, we have no revenue. We go out in a beltway, and we sit eight hours for a truck or trailer rolled over, we can't gain anything there, and that recalled our cost, recouping overtime for guys to come back in to cover, when I got four guys in the beltway, sitting on a tank truck on its side, we're eating that. And we think for some time, but we should probably try and recover some of those additional costs and quit putting on the taxpayers. And this is, this is a, a good step in the right direction, and of no cost out of our pockets at, at the onset of this, so.
And just to add on to that, as Chief Heckman just alluded to, we, up to this point, city taxpayers have been eating the cost of transits that come through and have a, have a crash on the highway, and we respond to it, and so, and city, city taxpayers are paying for that. So this allows us to then go after their insurance companies that are actually designed to cover these costs, and so this allows us to do that, and, and it will greatly benefit the city. So this was passed with a positive recommendation to the full body of council.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Chief Heckman, just a, a quick question. I, I can't recall, what was the number that we plugged into the budget for this year? Mr. Henderson?
The budget?
The number that we plugged into the budget for the fire recovery?
$20,000.
$20,000? Okay. Have, has the fire department run any kind of preliminary numbers on exactly how much we think this could be worth to us on an annual basis?
The numbers themselves?
Yeah.
We, they're based on, it's hard to say that right now. We have a, they go off of our ENFERS reporting system. We have 300 codes, we have 400 codes, some isolate for structures, structure fires, some rescue motor vehicle accidents, then there's a whole list of the ancillary codes that we go on. PAFERS will pull down those codes, the 300s, and then there's gonna be information that we're gonna need to obtain in the street. What did we use? Six flares, 50 pounds of absorbent? Did we use Hearst tools? Did we use heavy equipment? Do we have to bring in streets and parks with any there? That's all logged, checked in, loaded into the report, and then monthly, they automatically draw that information, those reports out of our system.
Got it.
Automatically, electronically, and it's done, he generates it, and it's all taken care of from there.
Got it.
So we were looking at existing numbers on calls based on, I think, 2,000, help me out here, 17, 18 numbers, we were in $39,000 to $40,000 just for that year runs, that they figure they could have recouped, so.
Got it, okay, excellent, that, that was what I was curious about, and so we are likely, potentially, beginning at this point in the year to see a $20,000. Well, thank goodness. And then, just two secondary questions about that process, and I understand that everybody else is using it, but first off, our, our, we have the software necessary to do all of that in the field already, correct?
Currently using it, correct.
And, okay, and our, and our guys are, it sounds as though our guys are already recording all of that information, so this won't even require an extra step or anything. And then, there's no privacy concerns associated with us inputting that information and this entity having access to it?
Correct.
From outside? Okay, all right, just, just double checking. All right, sounds good.
Yeah. Mr. Noviello?
I'm sure the chief wouldn't agree with me if I suggested that we're talking about what some would say are incidental expenses. At $30,000, $40,000, we're not talking incidental expenses here. This is, and I'm thankful for the chief, as he mentioned, we've been kind of after this for nearly three years here, and due to his efforts initially, and then all those around him who have given us the information that we're working with here tonight. This is another one of those elements, I think, that brings the city into the 21st century. It's, it's like long overdue, long past due. It does put us in line with a number of other communities. I know Mr. Henderson himself has called a number of those other communities purposely to discuss this issue, and all those comments came back, as I understand it, as recognizing that what we're doing is, you know, is what should be done.
Sure.
And what we should have maybe tried to do some time back, so. I appreciate your efforts, all those who are involved in making this happen as well, Including the, the pay fares people who were here and made a nice little presentation for us and gave us some background. Add a little bit of the confidence to what we were talking about at that time. And I think this is really going to help us out to, more than we maybe are able to recognize right now. So again, thanks for those efforts and thank you, Mr. President. Vice President.
Mrs. Katz?
It always bothered me for years that I've had insurance agents that would talk to me about surrounding areas that they would get their bills that were paid to the townships for the accidents and things like that that happened. And wanted to know what we recouped. And I always said, "Nothing." And they always thought we were so foolish that we were not going after this. So, to me, this is, this is a blessing, that this is finally going to come to fruition. Because as you said, we've been eating a lot of costs here that surrounding townships have been recouping for years.
Correct. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Henderson?
I might mention one more thing. There, there's been discussion in the past years on public safety about hazardous conditions, you know, when, when there's an accident and there's a big oil spill. And that's happened in our city. And we wonder, okay, who's going to pay for all of this? This allows us to, to get that insurance company to pay for it. It's a big cost for that kind of cleanup. And so, this, this ordinance takes care of that issue as well. That has been a concern on public safety for a number of years. I know Councilman Smith talked about that quite a bit. And so, we're glad to, to be able to address that concern as well.
Yes, we are. Mrs. Katz?
Remember the blood that was in the city from that, that one gentleman that created the accident throughout the city? That cost us a pretty penny back. It was about five years ago, I think. And we ate that cost. So there's so many different things that we have, we've had to eat the money. And it's like, it's about time. I'm very happy.
Yeah, remember that, that incident in particular, we recouped our, we recouped our, some of our fees, but if you remember, they were in increments of twenty dollars a month.
Right.
When we had the layout originally of several thousands of dollars. And I just don't see where that, you know, if any of us could get a home and a personal loan at that rate, we'd probably jump out in a heartbeat. It just seems like sometimes the people at fault seem to get, get away with certain things. So, we hope this recovers that and pushes that effort a little bit farther ahead, so.
Mr. Slaughter?
And this company only gets paid if we recover funds, correct?
Correct.
That way, people understand that.
Yes.
They're not just collecting money, taxpayer dollars from our...
Yes, he made it very clear, you get zero, he gets zero.
Right. So, just to, to everybody's aware.
And an important difference between adding staff and finance and
Yeah.
and, and something out to a third-party to take care of the same, the same billing issues, so, yeah.
We need to find about ten more of these kind of deals. Any other comments or questions? Mr. White?
Vice President Allison, there, in the, in the ordinance under section fifteen twenty, or zero nine D, there's a provision in there for authorizing the carrier or the per, or, excuse me, authorizing the city, the city's attorney or a third-party billing service to actually file a civil action. And that's standard. One thing that is available to the city that is not available to private litigants in a case like this would be the ability to file a municipal claim as well. That, there, we could add a comma there that says, "or a municipal claim" as an additional clause in here. And it's, I mean, it's not going to affect anything else in here. It just gives you an additional tool in the toolbox.
Good catch.
I would, I would recommend that, that I would, I would make that amendment, or that, I would move that amendment.
And, and the actual place that, that I would recommend putting it would be in that D where it says, "May enforce the provisions of this article by filing a civil action at law." I would place a comma there, "or a municipal claim," and then another comma, and then leave the, the whole rest of the thing in place.
So that's the...
I'll second that motion.
There's a...
Not to move things along or anything.
There's a motion and a second. That would be in our ordinance, the big ordinance, page eleven D, fourth sentence down. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
And do we have that marked and written up? Okay, great, we have everything we want right there. There's a motion and a second on the amendment to the ordinance. Any more discussion from council on that? If not, Mrs. Frank on the amendment.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, the amendment passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you, Austin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. White. Other comments or questions then on the matter at hand with the ordinance itself? If not, Mrs. Frank on the ordinance.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Sorry. Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Motion passes. And thank you, Mrs. Frank. We're on to item seventeen, which is the agreement. In short form, please.
A resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Williamsport and PA Fire Recovery Service.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Mr. Heckman?
All right, Mr. Allison, members of council. This is actually the contract. Maybe we, I don't know if we, it sure went the other way or not, but this is how it comes out. This would be the actual agreement with PAFERS that we would actually, what we just put into place here. This again went through public safety with a positive recommendation to move forward. And in there, you'll see there, it states out that they collect on the initial, is there fifteen percent of what the bill is. And that's where they get paid. And if it drags out to where there are sixty, ninety days out and there still hasn't been any resolve, that they can collect up to thirty percent of the bill because they're the ones doing all the legwork. They got their, their legal side of that. They're the ones chasing the fielding phone calls. They're not calling where you're used to, is calling here. So they're really taking of everything. And then it comes to a point where we get down the road and there could be a describing or question on it, we can actually just walk away from the claim. We've heard that from, Mr. Henderson, you heard that with our brothers in Scranton and Wilkes-Barre where, you know, Mrs. Gabbett lives up in such and such a street, has just no money. And we can just kind of say, okay, we'll just, we'll just walk away from this one. We're not out on anything. And, you know, John Q. Taxpayer. So, it doesn't happen often. I think Wilkes-Barre is, the word, the verbage they use maybe had three of them last year that went out that far. So, the rest were just done automatically. So, again, the history of this, this company and how they approach it and how it's done, and it's all that legal stuff behind and, and talking insurance, which is beyond me, is where they, that's why we, we looked at these folks, so.
Great. Mr. Henderson?
Yes, this did come before public safety. We passed it on with a positive recommendation to the full body of council. As Chief Heckman mentioned, PA Fire Recovery will collect fifteen percent. After six months, they can collect thirty percent. And again, the reason for that, as Chief Heckman alluded to, would be pretty much litigation kind of issues that would drag it out. I did make some personal phone calls to several chiefs in the state that use this, this company. And my question to them was, does that thirty percent, have you ever seen any indication that they might delay just to get that thirty percent? And, and they had no indication at all. They had nothing but good to say about this company. This is a one-year agreement. It will automatically renew every year. There's a sixty-day out for both parties. So if things are not going well, we can discontinue it and, and look elsewhere if we should desire. And I think that's, that's pretty much it. So we did pass it on to the full body with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
My only follow-up question on that is the fifteen percent, thirty percent is standard across all the municipalities they represent? Okay, great. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? This was reviewed by our solicitor, I see. You reviewed this then? Oh, maybe, Norm did. Okay, all right. So it was reviewed by a solicitor?
Yes.
With your recommendation.
Yeah. Thank you. No other questions or comments? Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. We'll move to item eighteen, Resolution on a 2018 State Fire Grant.
Resolution 2018 State Fire Grant.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Chief Heckman?
All right, I promise you this is my last one. This resolution is a, the yearly grant we go after. It's offered by the Office of the State Fire Commissioner. This comes out at this time every year and it's up to fifteen thousand dollars is the most a department can go after. There's a pot of money at the state level. And every volunteer and crew department across the state is competing for that. So some years you may get, and if they meet the qualifications, they'll get accepted. So as you can see, this year, we've got roughly fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, three or six cents of it. So, some years we've gotten thirteen and other years we've gotten almost the whole fifteen. So this money, this is earmarked for the purchase of pagers and making annual payments on a new command vehicle that we're in the process of bringing back towards council in two weeks to replace the current unit. It went through public safety again with a positive recommendation to move forward.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Henderson, public safety?
Yes, this, this grant, as was mentioned, is earmarked for two projects. The first would be for the, the purchase of, of new pagers and updating these pagers. They have a three-year warranty on them. And so that's the first five thousand or so. The remaining then would go for a down payment on a command vehicle. And, and we're looking at purchasing that by, by financing it over the next three years or so, sort of. Four years, four years, using this state fire grant the, the next four years to pay for that. And so, those details will come to us in a, in a meeting later on concerning that vehicle. But we do have the information concerning the pagers here currently. So we're, we're glad to be able to, to get this grant and to use it for much-needed reasons here. So we pass it on to the full body with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Comments or questions? Mr. Noviello?
Chief, just for the sake of our viewers, can you give us a rundown on the need and the purpose of these pagers?
Right now, the guys that are wearing, our pagers that we're currently wearing are probably Minotaur fives and, or fours, fives and sixes. The new pagers that we're coming out with, that we're actually going for here, the new ones which I'm currently wearing here, you can see, these have multiple channel frequencies. They also have voice record. So if you have a page or a dispatch comes out and someone misses it, maybe in a meeting like we did earlier, Chief Hagan, I ran out, we listened to it. We can hit record back on it. There's special options here for off-duty tones, our task force people. With all the organizations and responses and responsibilities we have, it's nice being able to page with like eight different frequencies in it. It's, it's head over heels of what we used to wear. But at the end of the day, the price hasn't gone crazy like we've seen it in the fire service and every other thing we buy. So, in the warning, and these things are, they're taking a beating. So, this will bring us up to probably almost a hundred percent of pager renewal, but we'll keep a couple of the old ones in the back just for, you know, drops to get run over. You can imagine what happens to these things.
Are these pagers used in the course of incidents when you guys are on site?
Generally, the, most of the guys will take them off prior to incident. If you do have them stuck on your belt, you know, they're going with you. So, but they fare well. So, they're a Motorola product, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Chief Heckman, grants, fire grants in general. Is, are there any grants or is there any pool of money that is in the state dedicated specifically for paid fire companies?
Now, it's, it's the, the problem that we're having at the state level is there seems to be a little, we call it a division there between the career and the volunteer side where there seems like they get to be a little bit more picks of the funds than the career side do. We're actually, right now, working in Harrisburg, the crew chiefs are across the state to try and get a little bit more even playing ground on that. There's been a lot of deliberation and of course, this is in a lot of action year or so. I don't know what will happen or what won't happen. But it's been on the, it's been on our priority list for quite a long time to see that. Now, in retrospect to the monies coming into the city, we get pension contributions in and, and the equivalent to that to the volunteer side is our Fireman's Relief Association monies. They can use theirs for operational costs, training, personal protect, or ours go towards contributions to the pension fund. So, we are, again, we are digging every day when you get that little bleep on your computer, fire grants. Problem is, it's qualifying. So, and some of them are very, very time-consuming. And what your reward is at the end is just not worth it. So, and there's matches and it just, and then coming up with the money if there's our contribution. So, this does not have a contribution to it. But we know that with the monies being divided out, we're going to have to pull a little bit out of our earmarked funds to help with some of these areas on this one. So, it's all been budgeted this year. So, and we have it stretched out for the next four. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Interesting. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Thank you, Chief Heckman, and thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes. Item nineteen, Resolution Authorizing the City to Accept a GTRP Grant. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution Authorizing the City of Williamsport to Accept a Greenways Trail and Recreation Program Grant previously awarded to the Lycoming, to Lycoming County.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Mr. Nichols, welcome.
Good evening, Vice President Allison, members of council. This resolution authorized City of Williamsport to accept a Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant which was previously awarded to Lycoming County for the proposed Basin Street-Susquehanna Riverwalk Connection Project. The total cost of the project as established by the grant application submitted by the county is two hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars, with the grant providing a hundred and eighty thousand dollars towards the project. And the county providing the required fifteen percent local match in the amount of sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. The county pursued this project as it is an important part of the twenty-five million dollar public-private partnership to revitalize Old City, the Old City Gateway Project, which includes a new admissions center under construction by Lycoming College as well as surrounding transportation improvements that we've talked about. And they're being jointly undertaken by Pendon and the City of Williamsport. Since the college and the city already have contracts with Larch Design Group, which is the design architect for Basin Street, the county recognizes that for better project coordination and project delivery purposes, the overall project would be better served if this component of the overall project would be incorporated into our project development activities. Again, the county will be providing all local match requirements as indicated in the recently approved Old City Revitalization Transportation Project Agreement, which I brought before council. And that's with Lycoming County. And the Finance Committee did review this at their meeting on Tuesday. And I'll defer back to the chair for any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Did I get a motion and a second on this? Okay. No?
I don't think there was a motion.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. It was reviewed in Finance?
In Finance, forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. We did, of course, double check. In, in fact, in addition to the, the fifteen percent match required by the grant, the county is in fact supplying the entirety of the project cost to the tune of about a thirty percent match, actually. And, which is lovely and means that the, that there's, that we, we get the money and it doesn't cost us anything. get the money and it doesn't cost us anything. And, which is, which is nice. The remainder of the discussion centered around the plans for the Riverwalk Connection, which Mr. Nichols said he will flesh out a little bit. The, the grant obviously was provided for specific elements of the project and there's no intention to change the disbursement, the ways in which we're spending the funds now that we are accepting the grant. We're simply, it simply is easier for us to oversee the entire process since we're taking care of Basin Street up to the stoplight there by the highway and, and this, this grant then moves from there onto the Riverwalk.
Right.
So, so it's, it's best in our hands. And with that, we thank the county for being willing to relinquish it.
Yeah. Mr. Noviello.
This is part of what I consider to be a long-term, or long-going project, the idea of the Riverwalk and making it a bit more accessible. In years past, when Mr. Grado was here, he helped us get some additional parking down there and make it a little bit easier to get access in that regard. This is another step out. This is a quality of life thing, you know, as we've been dealing with it over the course of time here. User-friendly access is really a key component here, particularly in certain areas where the traffic is rather busy and hectic at certain times of the day and such, and, you know, we want to make it easier and safer for our pedestrians. And of course, now we're talking cycling as well, we're trying to upgrade the value of cycling in the city at the same time. So I think this all kind of falls in place at a real good time here. And again, we don't have to expend any particular dollars of our own, to the extent that we're talking here tonight, you know, it's, it's a win-win for everybody. So appreciate Mr. Nichols' efforts in this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The county, if you look at the letter, they started this process back in January of last year. So, you know, they appreciate their persistence in trying to secure these dollars and in fact, they sponsored the entire Riverwalk project. So with Larson, as Councilwoman Mealy stated, Larson designing Basin Street all the way down to Viabella, and so this will just pick up from there. So it obviously makes sense to coordinate it through our project management activities.
Mrs. Katz.
I think it's being pointed out to us that the resolution itself should read the City of, the resolution authorizing the City of Williamsport to accept a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant Previously Awarded to Lycoming County, not Lycoming County Commissioners.
Where are you?
On, on the resolution itself.
Oh, you mean the title?
Yeah, uh-huh, yes.
Um, that's fine. I, I don't see a problem with that.
I'll, I'll.
Lycoming County?
It's not going to affect the validity of it, but it, it would be more appropriate for it to read awarded to the, to Lycoming County as opposed to the Lycoming County Commissioners.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I think we got this from the county, but that's, that's, I think, appropriate. I don't think, I think it's one of the same, so I think that's a good idea.
Leave it like it is or?
I would, you know, if you look at the first whereas then, it says the county of Lycoming is awarded a grant. I mean, it's, it's just, it's, I mean, the.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that? Is there a motion to amend?
A little.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Yes, we don't need any more discussion on that. Mrs. Frank on the amendment, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion on the amendment passes and there's no more discussion on the grant itself. Mrs. Frank, on that motion.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. So that brings us down to item twenty-three. Resolution to Approve Change Order Number Three to Master Service Agreement. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution to Approve Change Order Number Three to the Master Service Agreement Between the City of Williamsport and Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions, Inc. Wood.
Is there a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Mr. Benner, welcome.
Vice President Allison, members of council, good evening. What you have in front of you is a resolution for the approval of change order number three to the master service agreement between the City of Williamsport and Wood. And the, the amount will not exceed sixty-one thousand four hundred dollars, which is in line with the Wood's estimate that you have in your packet. The City of Williamsport is required to work within the SWIFT plan in order to remediate those deficiency, deficiencies identified within the periodic inspection, which was performed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. City Council approved Resolution Eight Seven One Nine for the SWIFT plan to be completed by Wood. A master service agreement between the City of Williamsport and Wood was approved by City Council under Resolution Eight Seven Four Nine. This change order allows Wood to complete the design and engineering work required to remediate the cross-pipe deficiencies in, in the northwest section of the levee system, which encompasses the levee section protecting Reach Road and the important industry which resides on Reach Road. This resolution and Wood's proposal was reviewed by the solicitor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benner. And it was reviewed by Finance and Public Works. Start with Finance.
Oh, it's Bonnie's turn to go first this time. I'm sure. This was reviewed by Finance and forwarded with a positive recommendation. We did have a hundred thousand dollars set aside in this year's budget for levy expenditures and, and this amount obviously is, is less than that hundred thousand dollars, sixty-one thousand four hundred. That said, the other piece of information that we were provided this evening relates to the amount of money that we've spent thus far with Wood, the number of contracts we currently have open with them, and how much funding, how much, how much debt we have outstanding on those contracts. And, Mr. Nichols, have you been privy to this document as well? Our, our current open contracts with Wood, the remaining budget is a hundred and, about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. You know, I'm not too where that, sure where that two fifty-two is coming from. I don't see any of these numbers adding up to that.
Original contract, and then there's.
But it's not.
One hundred and one thirty-four remaining. Remaining on the two fifty-two.
The, the contracts listed come to significantly more than two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
I didn't prepare that.
And even the amount that we.
The two fifty-two is Wood's numbers. The second part was added after I had it all told up.
Ah, okay.
Add it all together.
I was like, I don't know where to add these numbers coming from. Okay. So the two fifty-two is prior to the relief while testing elements that have been completed and the Tom Keller amount then, correct? Okay. So we had, we have total contracts with them frankly closer to the amount of four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And Adam, does that, does this chart include the one that we're about to authorize? Okay. So then, just to give some idea of the scope, our total contracted amount with Wood is somewhere on the order of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And of that, we will then owe close to two hundred thousand, which I guess was the root of my question. If they do complete all of this work this year, where are we getting that money?
Oh, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Plus the sixty-one thousand four.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. With this, yeah.
Got it.
We've assigned prior year budgets, so we don't release or let previous levy budgets go to the bottom line.
Got it.
We hold on to them to cover the open contracts.
So we have two hundred thousand, that's true.
Between the general fund and Act Thirteen, those are covered.
Okay, good.
But we're still trying to give you that overall matrix.
No, I, I appreciate it.
So that's not a complete.
This is very helpful. I was just wondering, we had a discussion about a hundred thousand dollars set aside. I, and I wasn't quite certain where we, where we were at with prior year expenditures, but we do have the two, the total two hundred thousand dollars covered with the monies that we've set aside thus far.
But we still need to give you that.
So as long as Mr. Benner and/or Mr. Winder can avoid coming to us with something else that we need to pay for between now and the end of the year.
Please, no.
We got it. All right. That, and then the, the, the other discussion that we had during the Finance Committee meeting related to the five hundred thousand dollar bond issue. And I believe our hope was that between our consultant Penn Strategies, who's been doing some work on levy funding, perhaps the help of the county, and then the Finance Department, we would establish here shortly, the, we specifically borrowed five hundred thousand dollars for the levy related to the idea of matching funds, grant funds that we would receive. And we believe that, that the monies that we spent with Wood thus far, and perhaps even the time of, of city staffers can count as a match toward grant funds that we might receive, but we, I think obviously that's specific to each and every grant that we're applying for and obviously, and, and we need to, to firm that up before we could release any of the five hundred thousand dollar bond funds that, that we did borrow.
Yeah, get the bag saved before match.
Right.
Earlier, match.
Right. But I guess the question is, do the Wood expenditures count as match?
No, that's, my concern is some grants do not recognize expenditures prior to the approval of the grant. So sometimes they do. So that's why we're hesitant to, if we can use other sources before we, you know, use those bond funds, which were restricted by council's match dollars, that's, that's why we're doing this.
And I think we can rest assured that we will spend another five hundred thousand dollars on the levy before this is all said and done.
We can assure you that.
Right.
If I may add, on that point, the county assures us that ten percent of that five hundred thousand can be used for a match, for engineering purposes of, of the monies that is going to Wood out of the sixty-one four hundred. So that would be fifty thousand out of that.
Got it. Well, that's, I mean, it, it seems as though we currently have the, the set aside to cover it unless we have reason to believe that this would count as a match and something else coming in the future would not. Do you know what I'm saying? So it seems like we might as well cover this out of cash in hand unless, unless we have some, unless we have some reason not to. But of course, I leave that to the administration who probably has much, a much better ability to determine that than I do. So, anyway, all of that noted, the Finance Department forwarded this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. And I would, understanding the finances slightly better now than I did on Tuesday, I would continue to recommend it positively from my own, from my own perspective. I can't speak for the remaining members of Finance.
And, and we have, we did budget a hundred thousand in this year's budget.
Yes, in twenty nineteen, excuse me.
And, and we talked a little bit about some of the money we already have. We've spent roughly one point two million already.
In excess of a million, yes.
Yeah. So we have been working on this all along. We haven't, we've been sitting here hoping it was going to take care of itself. And there are other grants and funds that the, the county, Fran McJunkin, shared with us. They're looking for, some are significant, like a possible four million dollar grant that has a fifty percent match, but, you know, we can work some of these things into it. So we have, I think the important thing to note is, is we have a plan, a short-term plan and a long-range plan for the levy repairs and recertification. We also have a plan to get the money, other than the city going bankrupt or us having to double taxes or anything like that. So a lot of this stuff is worked on behind the scenes and it doesn't become public until we can actually put forth some things. Mrs. Katz, it was reviewed in Public Works as well.
Yes, it did. It did come to Public Works and we discussed, of course, at Finance, but Public Works, we, we discussed infrastructure with this. We've been working on this for over seven years at this point and we're just going to start breaking ground in the next.
Probably in the spring, yes. They're working on those bid documents right now as we speak.
And the one thing, when we first started working on this, as Mr. Allison said, we looked at this as a total project before. And as it started out, it was a couple of million, then it went up to five, ten, fifteen million dollars. And we looked at, and it was all encompassing and it was really disturbing because we did not know how we were going to fix this problem. And as Senator Yaw pointed out to us at one meeting, we had to break it down into smaller pieces and we take piece by piece. And this way, by taking it piece by piece, we are able to get more funding and, and explain things better. We do have people work going to Harrisburg and also to Washington, D.C., constantly trying to get the funding for us. Fran McJunkin from the county has been a world savior for us because she is constantly looking for funding, looking and talking to people constantly as far as how we can solve these problems. And, and with you, Mr. Benner, you've been going with them, you've been trying to come up with all the information to feed back to us. And once we break ground, after we've already spent over a million dollars on just engineers and studies, which is so mind-blowing when you think about it, it just is, at times it is disturbing. The one place that they are going to start working on and trying to get the funding for are the cost of the cross pipes in the west end. That is where Reach Road is, where all the businesses are being inundated with the insurance companies, as we all saw in the paper. They were told at one point that we were really not doing anything with the levy as it came to be. We, they didn't understand that we have been working on this for seven years, that we have, it's been a constant progress with us and, and a process. And the Army Corps of Engineers, what they did, why this hit so hard in the paper is because the Army Corps of Engineers put it on their website that we were not really doing anything with the levy. But at this point, it has changed, our status has changed.
Yes.
By the Army Corps. What is the word they use now?
That is now, let me, let me look the wording up.
I can't think of it.
They're active in the rehabilitation program.
Which is.
As of this date. So it's tangible results.
It's tangible and which is also appeasing the insurance companies because they're seeing that we are working on the levy. We're not letting this just go by the boards. We do not want to see the city or the businesses paying flood insurance. And we have many people working on this, this problem at this point and we are starting to see a little bit of daylight and with more and more people working on this in Harrisburg and Washington, D.C., and with the county. The county has been a big help, they really have. They have been tremendous in coming up with so many solutions. We don't feel like we're in this alone anymore. And we shouldn't be alone because we are the county seat. We are the ones that have the most jobs here in the, in the area. If that levy breaks, I, I don't remember how many jobs we lose in this area and property. We're talking billions. And so therefore, it is very important that we do maintain the levy. The other point I want to make, and we keep on saying this and reiterating this, this, we have taken care and maintained that levy for all these years. The Army Corps every year came in and, and they certified our levy. What has happened is the levy just got old and, and that's what happened. The parts need to be changed at this point. And that's, that's why we've reached this level. And of course, Katrina was the catalyst for every level in the, levy in the country. So we all have this issue. I don't care where you are, if you have a levy throughout, anywhere in the country, you're all facing the same issue. So, but I think we jumped on this quicker than anybody else, I really do. And I, I'm pleased with where we're headed at this point.
Good.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Other comments? Mr. Noviello.
Just to agree with Mrs. Katz for just a moment, we have in fact been making the progress that we noted here and that's been made known to the public as well. The interesting part about this is, was mentioned, is this is not a particular to Williamsport, this is a nationwide concern. And at the same time, we're talking about how we would like to be further along, we are in effect still leading the pack nationwide. So a lot of other areas in the nation. So a lot of other areas in the nation are really looking to us as sort of a, I don't know, pseudo template, I guess, to see where, where things will go and how things are going to be handled. So we're in, in many respects, breaking new ground here, no pun intended. But, you know, I think we are in fact doing what would be expected of us to do at this point in time. I think some of the language that the Army Corps used in their public commentary wasn't maybe as accurate as it might have been. And it looked like we were kind of dragging our feet. The reality, believe me, has been just the opposite of that. So I just wanted to reiterate that very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noviel. Other comments or questions? Mr. Slaughter.
Are, are we keeping track or is there a system in place? I know we spent over a million dollars, as Councilwoman Katz just said, whereas now we're starting to break ground. At all the studies that we've done, where we're not going to go back and duplicate any studies or efforts that have already been completed, where we could utilize those studies that have already been done. Do we have, are we tracking that at all or keeping track, or is the administration?
Yes, we're starting to get a, a handle on that and make sure we don't double tap things that have already been done. Me, me and Adam, we're just speaking about this this morning. Yeah, that, that, that's happening.
Okay. So I just, I know Councilwoman Katz said we've broken into smaller pieces, started with overall plan. So that way, as we start to move forward here with the project, actual completion of the relief wells, cross pipes, et cetera, that we have those efforts already completed and we're not spending another million dollars that is duplicating the million dollars we've already spent. So, you know, hopefully, the administration has some type of to-do list or order of what needs to be done.
Yes. This is a.
It's keeping track with Wood. Wood is keeping track.
Good, okay.
I'm comparing, comparing everything to the periodic inspection by the Army Corps and making sure those, the most, the highest priority items are addressed first and that nothing, you know, gets double tapped or reworked.
Right. That was my concern, that we've already spent a ton of money, that we're not coming back and saying, hey, we need to now, we're doing the cross pipes, we need to go in and take a look at this when we've already done that. So, so we are, we do have that.
I think the only thing that would create a problem is if the mandates changed. And sometimes that is a problem. The mandates do change sometimes because you, we do have the, the, the arguments between the Army Corps and FEMA. At times, they don't agree on what, what has to be done. And, and that, and that does create a problem. And sometimes we are caught in the middle. But as far as paying for the studies, no, we will keep on top of that.
Right. And, and utilizing the studies that we've already.
Yes.
Completed.
Ms. Mealy.
And the only thing I would add to that is, I think we've been working on this for almost my entire time on council at this point. Remind me, how, how long has it been? It's been at least, at least seven or eight years.
Yeah, I was on Public Works and that was a long time ago. When it first.
And, and so the secondary note that I would make, Derek, is that it is always humanly possible in a project that extends out for this long that even though you have done the work at some point, the status of the, whatever the relief wells, the status of the cross pipes has changed in the interim. And, and so I just wanted to put that out there as a caveat to, not, not, of course, that we are, that anyone is eager to, to pay to do the same engineering study twice, but it is a human possibility if, if this project, if the project as it will extends out for another five, five to 10 years, you know.
And that's a good point because it, it's really complicated in some ways, but the Army Corps began the whole process with us by saying, check out everything you have. So that was, and everything had a, a condition and a status report. And as Ms. Mealy says, that was several years ago now, you know, whether they might have to be looked at again or not, but they've been rated. But I think there's ways to probably evaluate that, you know, how, how good a condition they were in. But the only, and the only thing I wanted to, and the, the, the relationship between Army Corps and FEMA, as I understand it, is Army Corps certifies whether your levy has met the condition to be operable. And FEMA then is the side that tells, that cer, actually certifies it. And that's what the insurance companies are waiting to see. Does FEMA say that the Army Corps said it's good to go? So, but we talked about so much here tonight. Just, just so it's clear, this sixty-one thousand dollars is so that we can get the, the Reach Road area done because that became a hot button. So we're kind of jumping ahead and, and going out of line because we need to do that for the businesses, to protect the businesses that are up there and, and their insurance concerns, which are valid. I mean, that, the, the immediate issue isn't actually that the levy is going to break and we're going to get flooded, it's that the levy gets decertified, then everybody protected by it has to buy flood insurance. And that's the first concern. Along with that, then, we definitely want a levy that's operable and is not going to have a structural failure. So we need to keep, I need to keep reminding myself of how everything fits together. But any other questions or comments?
If I can make a comment.
Yeah.
Just to build on Council Slaughter's point, I think not only double checking what's happened in the past, make sure we're not duplicating spending. I mean, a complicated project like this was ongoing for many, many years. I think maybe, you know, to add on to his point is maybe we should somehow evaluate the performance of the consultant at some point along the way because it is such a long process. You know, once you start with a consultant and you go, years, you know, at some point maybe you should just sort of do an evaluation of all the parties and just to see, making sure we're getting, you know, I'm not saying we're not, but, but it just is, after you spend a half a million dollars, at some point maybe, you know, just talk about performance and just to make sure that everything is where it should be going.
Good point, well taken. We need to take that into consideration as well, since we're years into this now. But we won't do that right tonight. First, we're going to vote on this side. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Novielo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. And the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Benner.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Frank. And I think that brings us to the end of our ordinances and resolutions and all of that. Item twenty-four, except for filing tonight, the Finance Committee meeting, Committee Minutes of December fourth, twenty eighteen, Public Work Minutes, November twentieth, twenty eighteen, ERC Minutes, November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, Controllers' Report for January twenty nineteen, and Veterans Memorial Park for February fourth, twenty nineteen. Is there a motion?
No movement.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions about those minutes for those various committees? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Novielo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes. Item twenty-five announcement. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting is Thursday, March twenty-eighth, seven thirty PM, right here. Upcoming meetings, Monday, March eighteenth, at noon, Planning Commission; Tuesday, March nineteenth, at ten AM, Bladed Property; at three thirty PM, ERC, which we will be having a meeting; six thirty PM, Harb, Historical Board; Wednesday, March twentieth, at four PM, Board of Health; Thursday, March twenty-first, at ten thirty, that probably is AM?
AM.
Okay. AM Zoning Board Hearing, Zoning Hearing Board; and Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, at eleven AM, Historical Review Board. I don't think we have any other meetings that look on the back. Oh, we do. On the back page. One, back to, Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, one PM Finance Committee, two thirty PM Public Works, three thirty PM Public Safety, seven PM Citizens Corps; Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, eleven thirty AM Redevelopment Authority; and Thursday, March twenty-eighth, seven thirty PM City Council. Comments from council members? Ms. Mealy.
Just one quick point, that, the Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, eleven AM meeting is actually the His, the Committee on Historic Preservation Council Committee and not the Historical Review Board.
Let's not review more.
Well, I don't believe so. I mean, Harb is meeting, it, Harb meets in the evening, six thirty PM on Tuesday, March nineteenth. So I think this is, that's the Historic Preservation Committee meeting, right, Dennis?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Noted. Okay, any other? Mr. Slaughter.
Just think, there's a lot of various items floating around out there. I know the mayor's absent again tonight, but I know we're all fielding questions.
Right.
Around a number of items that are floating. I think at some point, you know, those need addressed by the administration via agenda items or wherever we can have discussion because, you know, we haven't had those discussions and I can't answer them without, you know, answers from the administration. And when he's absent and different members of administration are absent, that makes it more difficult. So I think just to get clear and transparent to the taxpayers and being able to answer questions that they have, I think we need to have that discussion at some point around a number of items.
Well said. We most certainly do. Other comments from council tonight? I just want to, I did want to, I did bring it. I don't know if you caught in the paper, Megan Dehoff earns prestigious designation, our HR. Megan Dehoff, Director of Human Resources for the City of Williamsport, has been awarded the prestigious, prestigious designation of Senior Certified Professional by the Society for Human Resource Management. A candidate for the designation must demonstrate both a strong understanding of the academic discipline in addition to the clinical experience in the real world. And she's getting a good dose of that here on Williamsport, PA. The real world. In any case, she's done a, a good job and has been recognized for that. So we want to recognize her. Comments from the administration tonight? Mr. Nichols.
Just one comment, maybe it's a little self-serving, but tomorrow is my father's ninetieth birthday, so I want to shout out a happy birthday to him. He's served the community for many, 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 many years and still does, in fact. But, so I just thought I'd tell you, happy birthday, Dad. Probably asleep, I reckon, but.
If he watches the tape of the council meeting tomorrow. But we join you in that, Mr. Nichols, having to.
Well, he was on the first city council in the new form of government back in the seventies. And he was on the charter commission, in fact. And so, you know, he has still, you know, something to do about city council, so.
And among other things that I found out after I got on the STEP board was he was one of the founding members of his.
The one that put it together, that's a lawyer.
STEP in the city, which is, has been a great benefit to a lot of different people in different situations, but most notably those who need, have been underserved at one point and needed the kind of services that, that STEP provides. And it's really a great organization now and among the many other things he's done. But we wish him a happy birthday as well and many more. Anything else from the administration? Not from the, anyone from the citizens tonight here in attendance?
Good evening.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Mr. Allison, counsel, I come before you tonight to try to get somebody to help me clean up my neighborhood. I live in Jaysburg, been there all my life from birth, worked at the same job forty-eight years, retired. My neighborhood is falling apart. It's deplorable. We have some landlords that don't care. They live in Florida. I have a rental property next to me. There's five adults in there. They tear cars apart. It's just a deplorable situation. Mossor Avenue, Royal Avenue, I live on Royal Avenue. I pay huge taxes. I'm considered, my tax base is light industrial. I have a beautiful home and it's worthless because of my neighborhood. If I could get codes out there, I've had them out there three or four years, they'll come out, they'll clean the place up about maybe a week later, it's the same. It's just deplorable. So I beg counsel, the administration especially, I need codes to come out there and enforce this. They do come out when I call them, but it just isn't working. I don't know if they're fining them, I don't know. But I'd like your help.
Well, we certainly are glad you came forward. We need your name and address for the public record, but.
Charles Wolf, twenty-two, twenty-six Royal Avenue, Williamsport.
And that was Wolf, W-O-L-F?
W-O-L-T-Z.
Oh, W-O-L-E-D. Well.
Yeah, Gary Nar, I had him out there a few times. I don't know if he still is working for the administration, but he has helped me in the past. We got one lady that has like fifty-five cats. I seen a rat the other day. I don't need that in my neighborhood. I got a beautiful house and it's worthless.
Well, we hear your concerns tonight, sir, and it'll be taken.
And the agenda about the levy? I like that idea. It's going to help me out.
Close up and personal with that.
So I appreciate the time.
Yes.
And I see you have a meeting there on the agenda for Bladed Properties. I'll probably be back for that.
That's a good idea as well.
So thanks a lot.
We'll be in contact with you. Thank you. Anyone else from the public tonight?
I'll try to make this short and sweet. I doubt it. Vice President Allison, member of councils, my name's Dennis Loner, I live at two-two-six Eldred Street. Back in two thousand and ten, you may, may remember there was a string of burglaries in East End. Well, my home was one of them. Mayor Campana had a town hall meeting at Curtain School regarding crime. I believe Councilwoman Smith at the time was there and some others. At the meeting, I suggested as a way to maybe fight crime or prevent crime was for the city to get rid of the high-pressure sodium lights, go to white lights. I said, technology has changed, and this is two thousand and ten, there's brighter lights out there. Couple days later, Mayor Campana contacted me, met me at my house along with John Markley, and he directed John to replace one of the lights at the corner of Franklin and Eldred Street. Okay, so I wanted to acknowledge the mayor for that. I recently did some research on LED lights. Now, when I talk LED lights, I'm not just talking light bulbs, I'm talking the whole luminaire, which is the whole service head of that light. Municipalities from all over are either in the process of replacing them with LEDs or they've already done it. And reasons are safety, crime prevention, and more importantly to them, cost savings. Some municipalities estimate between forty to fifty percent they'll save on their electricity costs. Loyalsac is in the process. If any of you drive Sheridan Street, Vaxton Parkway, Lafayette Parkway, look at their streetlights, nice and bright, make everything look clean. Snow actually looked white. I'm not sure how many lights the city owns. Adam probably could maybe answer that better than I can. PPL also owns poles. From what I saw on PPL's website, if there's a placard on that light pole and it says the municipality to contact, that's owned by the municipality. A lot of the ones in my neighborhood are, I saw the city placard on them, so I'm assuming they're owned by the city. I'm not standing up here. I'm not standing up here asking you to go out and replace every streetlight with new LED luminaires. Similar to the ones in Loyalsack and other places, they average $400 a luminaire. But I'm asking you, as you look forward to the future, to start looking at replacing the city's streetlights. As I said, crime prevention, cost savings. I'm not sure if there's grants out there that could be had for, you know, safety or energy savings. But we're looking at paving streets, hopefully curb to curb. When you pave a street, why not replace the lights with LEDs? Now you've got a nice paved street, nice bright street. I know we're doing more pathways to health, or pathways on Phase 4. We're putting up the historical streetlights. Why not do the overhead lights as well? So that's why I'm here. I know, I believe, from the website, the city's repaired over 1,300 lights. Now, I don't know if that's all streetlights, overhead streetlights, or if they're actually along the streets. But if you have a light out there that you've maybe replaced four times, you know, maybe the city looks at replacing it with LEDs. Supposedly, it's supposed to last longer, 10 years, roughly, I think they estimate. I also think that they're, like I said, these lights we have now, to me, make the city look dark. They're ugly looking. Some of you are too young. We used to have white lights in the city when I was a kid. We got away from it. I've never been a big fan of these high-pressure sodium lights. I understand why they went to them. But I'd like to see the city, maybe as they go into the future, start looking at replacing lights and going to nice LED lights. Your cost may be higher initially, but maybe in the long run, you'll save some money. Thank you.
It did start, it's initiative that John Markley started, he put up previously, but he picked the area of Campbell Street heading west. So this past year, we picked up where he left off, finished going west. It leaves you on Memorial Avenue from Campbell Street all the way to the bridge. You'll see that there's LED lights up. We did Memorial, Park Avenue, and Louisa, Rural Avenue. So everything north of Forest Street, everything west of Campbell Street, you'll see that LED.
I've seen out there would appear to be LED lights. Now, I don't know, are they the bulbs or are they actual LEDs? I saw a few by Liberty Arena, which were really nice.
They're pre-branded, bought through Friedman's. We're purchasing to a local vendor. This year, we're looking to do another 80, roughly.
Yeah, like I said, even the one that was placed at my house, and that was 2010, nine years old. The ones that I've seen in Loyalsack, much brighter than, that's how much technology's changed and continues to change. So, you know, I'm thinking that, you know, get the city back to where it's nice, bright. You know, we're talking about revitalizing neighborhoods, you know, maybe start with LED lights there.
We're branching out from where John Markley started. We're going to do that section, then jump to the East End, and have a whole section. The middle is not done. Wasn't, we're trying to do all mains, you know, east and west, north and south, you know, branching out from there. So this year, we'll go from Campbell Street to the East End.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good discussion. Anyone else? Mr. Nichols?
One other thing that Joe left, but if anybody's been traveling on Forest Street in the area of Bowman Field, they'll notice a new traffic sign, which is announcing that beginning April 1, Forest Street will be closed, I think from the bridge to Arch Street. And so in other words, all the traffic that comes down Forest Street, the detour will be down to Third Street, and then on in. At the ramp. But internally, we've had a discussion. I have some concerns, like Joe does. Joe just authored a letter to PennDOT requesting more information. We're concerned about detours and traffic and all that kind of good stuff, because April 1 is not, this is not April Fool's joke. This is a reality, I think. So I just wanted to alert everybody that we are working on that. So, you know, I think that's going to be quite a disruption. It's going to be there for a long time. So I just wanted to say that we are trying to be on top of that.
And there was...
Yeah, it's a PennDOT project that you all know about, the Forest Street project. So this is the beginning.
But and our police and fire need to know that stuff as well, especially.
It's a big impact, so...
Also for the walkability for the students in Newbury. They're going to have to be careful walking in that area.
We were able to address that kind of briefly at the Public Works meeting the other day. And we've had some difficulty with communication and UGI, or rather, PennDOT. And, you know, the claim was that they will step up the pace and make sure that that's addressed in a better fashion than it has been up to now. But they have control of their sites and their work, you know, involvement. And the city doesn't have an awful lot of say, except to try to use as much influence as we can to get something done and to get some feedback from them that's meaningful, valuable, and then visible. And the issue that we see coming up here shortly is going to be, it's going to be rough to contend with. We always hear that, you know, everybody doesn't want the mess at the time. We always try to alleviate that stress by saying how nice it will be after the fact. But that doesn't really alleviate the problem that we're facing presently. And I'm afraid it's going to be rather difficult over the next, you know, several months and probably over the next couple of years.
We have a permit process, so we do have proper information being transmitted between parties. So, you know, they need to follow through with that. And so I know, I can just imagine Third Street being a lot of traffic. And, you know, we're public services, our facility, Wendy's or whatever it's called, School District. There's a lot of, it's difficult now to pull out on Third Street because of traffic flying over the bridge. And, you know, it's all heavy equipment and slow-moving vehicles. And if you triple, quadruple the traffic, how do you get out on the Third Street? Now, they solved the problem at the ramp with the traffic signal, but they didn't solve our problem, because we have probably a similar amounts of traffic coming in and out of those facilities. So we do have a concern about that, which I think needs to be addressed. So Joe, I thank Joe for doing that, so we can get some dialogue.
We have been addressing this for some time. And just actually, a couple of years back, when we knew this process was going to begin, we asked PennDOT to address Third Street, because we knew it was going to be taking on the additional traffic. And then response we got was, yeah, in 2022. So this is 2019. We're beginning the project. By the time this project is done, they'll probably end up repaving Third Street. You know, after it's all said.
I thought that was...
We need it now, you know. So it'll be interesting to see how they respond.
Anything else tonight? If not, are we going to have an executive?
Motion.
Yeah. We're going to have a brief executive session after we close. Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.